Father, first I thank you for your abundant love, your mercy, your grace, your compassion, and your justice. There's no one to be compared to you, and I just look to you and thank you for your provisions for our community. I ask them, Father, that you be with those who have been selected as stewards of our resources, that you give them wisdom, guidance, and direction. Father, I also pray tonight for our community. There many of you are upset or angry because of the senseless cycle of violence that seems to rotate here and there and time again. God, there's a momma who's lost a child. We have first responders who must respond to gruesome environments when they get a call. And I ask that your peace and your comfort will rest upon them. And we ask these things in your son's name.
Again, this is a work session. No action is taken during a work session. We just discuss things that may come up later on an agenda for action. First guest up this evening, District Attorney Steve Giddens regarding funding for fiscal year 23. Welcome, sir. Thank you for visiting.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, as always. I think I've been coming here, I think, twenty years now. That's how long we've been in the task force, that's how long it's been since. And I say the same thing every year. That's what makes it work, is everybody being in. This year has been a very busy year, unfortunately. A lot of our usual drug cases, possession cases, distributions, a lot of violent crime in the past year since I was here last. And the Drug Task Force works that as well, in partnership with your police department and other agencies. And so a lot of federal operations going on. One's just concluded recently. You'll see the press release in the packet that we gave you. That's the big time meth dealers in this county. A lot of them are known to us, but it was took off over fifty pounds of methamphetamine getting in the streets in this county, your city as well. But we are asking, and back to that, that there's something always going on. I'm not always limiting when I come here to tell you everything's going on. I haven't clearly taken that because that was completely. But just know that those things are ongoing. The partnership with ATF, DEA, the US Attorney's Office is something that's very valuable to everybody in this county. And we are asking the same as last year, which is eighty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars for Solocaga to be in part of the task force and continue to do good things. It's always good to go, because we all have the same goal in mind, is to do everything we can to keep drugs out of the system. It's killing people, but to do everything we can to continue to fight this war on drugs. I ask any questions that you have. And Christina Kilgore, Chief Deputy Officer here always, and Mike Robinson's commanding the task force east here as well. Ask you any questions that you might have.
We also have provided an officer assigned to the task force, which is not currently filled, right?
That's correct.
And the plan would be you still want us to be able to provide that assistance on top of that?
We had one in the entire team, but I know y'all were showing, like our departments are showing, that you're short, we are short a man from here right now.
Are we done with this?
Lincoln is with us. We just went down.
We're trying to do his best, and that'll get more and more gaps, doing his best.
Yes, we know.
And we did do the full eighty-two last year?
Yes, we did. And I see you, Mr. Perry, I mean, look at these numbers. You see the one of these sheets numbers you will see in Solocaga only. It's broken down in entirety, but that is from October one and through today.
So that's everything that come from here?
Sir?
That's everything that come out of Solocaga?
Yeah, you see the one there, Mr. Brewer, that's got Solocaga City only.
Yes, sir.
Your case is exclusive, the numbers there. And then the other one is everybody's included, year to date, for the ten days short of fiscal year being over.
Well, thank you for your hard work, and we will give it all the consideration we can give it. We want to make sure you're able to do what you need to keep doing.
Well, thank you. And as always, if any questions come up after tonight, tomorrow, any time you got, we're always there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Got to move some things around based on link. Ms. Morris wanted to discuss something related to business license ordinance?
Yes, and I think this is in your packet. There's a couple of attachments with that also. First thing, every five years, the Department Labor or the Department Revenue allows cities to increase their issue pay on their business licenses. This year, back to January one, cities are eligible to increase their fee by two dollars. That's from twelve to fourteen dollars. That's the first time, like I said, is every five years you can do that. We normally hold any changes and look at any changes that are needed, and we do it at that five-year time. There are a couple of changes that we are requesting this year, and these are to help our businesses. There is no increase to be in business on any business licenses. There's some savings, okay? These are some savings for businesses that have approached us over the last few years, asking for some relief. Mainly your landscaping services. They're, we are recommending in a decrease for their minimum, which is up to ten thousand dollars, from a hundred and fifty dollars down to a hundred dollars to them. So they would see a decrease of fifty dollars, as well as some of these other companies here. These are a lot of your small businesses, and you can see the savings based on this spreadsheet that's attached here on the back.
So it's like the hundred and fifty thousand bracket, and less than, that would give those same that you just talked about?
Anything less than ten thousand dollars would be reduced from a hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred dollar fee.
Does it, does it just affect those from ten to?
It just affects the gross receipts of less than ten thousand dollars in this category on the back.
So that means that really small business operators save fifty bucks?
Yes.
But is there a way that we could help? And I know I may be, we've probably already answered this, and I missed it, but is there a way that we can help all the businesses? And get business licenses, give them a little help too?
Well, you've got four thousand businesses buy licenses every year.
Okay, four thousand seven hundred and fifty?
Approximately thirty-five hundred businesses.
Okay.
Okay, buy business licenses, and we get new ones every year.
Right.
It's your second largest revenue stream in the city, okay? I, unless you want to reduce your revenue, we have looked at the ones that have come to us and questioned over the past few years and requested some type of break. It's your smaller businesses, okay, that come in and just give a couple of thousand dollars a year.
Sure.
Okay, those are the ones that we have actually looked at, giving them a little break.
And I guess the reason I spoke, because we've all, everybody's been impacted by inflation and COVID and other things. And I was just thinking outside to try to help everybody.
And that's the reason we are not requesting any type of increase. We have not had any type of increase in the last five years for any businesses.
Good.
The only increase would be two dollars, you know, which would bring in about seven thousand dollars, and which would subsidize this savings to your smaller businesses.
Sure.
Okay. There are a couple of adjustments that we wanted to add, just some schedules we wanted to amend, and those are highlighted on your first page here. We've had a lot of requests for sale, meat sales. Vendors coming in in trucks setting up, wanting to sell beef, we are adding that because we have never allowed that before. We're also adding some short-term rentals. That's never been on our schedule before. That was requested to be added. And we have, on your alcohol, we have added a section for wholesale beer and wine combined, which is allowed by state, and that's a schedule and a date set by state. So it's just a few changes. It's cleaning up a few things, and it's getting the break to some of your smaller businesses. That was our request section for this upcoming.
If I do my trouble first?
It would be effective January one.
Ms. Kim, when somebody comes and buys a license, I know when I, by mine, that I usually get it in the mail, because it happens, is that why everybody else gets theirs?
Most people do unless they come in and purchase it. We didn't too, and at that time. We email those that request it, we email lots of them, we normally send out in.
So we've got various ways of getting it, so it doesn't take a long time, so they can get it in place where it needs to be?
Well, normally, every one's license is due by January first, so that's when we have several thousand coming in at the same time. There can be a delay in January, February of getting those. Because we have two to three people that, that actually process all three thousand of those. But your license is late after March one, so we have two months to process every license.
Okay.
And unless, you know, it's a new license, unless a contractor comes in, say, last week.
Right, and maybe we can feel some of those vacancies you have in the clerk's office, maybe that'll help with that process.
Well, we have one, well, we have one county clerk vacancy, yes.
Right.
That was, is, is on the.
Looks good. Questions? Okay.
I do not have it on the agenda tonight. I did want y'all, you know, ask any questions. I'd like to put it on the next agenda.
Please do. Thank you.
I, I, well, I'm probably, what's the late fee? What is the, the late, the late fee is fifteen percent after thirty days, and it goes up to thirty percent after sixty days. And that's set by state law also. We do not set that fee. Most of this is pretty well state law. We do set fees, but not our late fees are, are the issue pay that's set out of state law.
Good, thank you. My question, you needed to discuss a problem we have at eight oh seven North Main Avenue, I believe.
It's not a problem. We got nothing to do, demolish, with the gap, we kind of have to.
So does that mean we need to remove it, or is it still a, an unsafe structure that we need to keep on the list?
If somebody is dating anyone, you have to relocate him. It's probably be missed if they don't.
Okay, so he says it's best that we eliminate it since it's an occupying residence, and we have to relocate them before we can demolish.
Do you want to?
With the.
There's some options. You can rescind the resolution where you ordered the abatement of this house, if you wish, okay? And readdress it at a later time.
Got a question. So if someone is living in it, and it's been considered unsafe, if something happens to them in it, would we allow them?
Just don't have to be addressed, it's a process.
Different process of resolutions. So we should rescind and?
Not the red, not the other two processes, just the one that you think, eight oh seven.
Is that, which one is that, on the corner, or is that the one right behind the school?
Eight oh seven, eight oh seven, man.
So someone's gonna accept, because even if we rescind it, so we don't do anything else? We just, we just stop what we're about to do, it's legal, me?
No, you're only, you're only stopping at one house, it's definitely what it's going.
I know, I know, but I'm saying. But what I'm saying, eight oh five, eight oh seven, and eight oh nine. Okay, but what eleven?
But I'm concerned that we decided that it's not inhabitable, but he's inhabiting it, so we need to, as you said, address it with a different process.
Correct.
Yes, but we are gonna address it.
Good.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we send the current ordinance and do that also on the next agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
I think we get an update on the addressing, you know, can we put on there so we can have an update on what happens, the next step, so that way, that way we're?
Know what's going on.
Please?
Okay, Reed wanted to discuss something, I believe.
Yes, need to send a shelter employee for CUD certification. Just got the update about clients, clients of October thirty. And it's only once a year, so it's kind of active now, but then, Tony's license is far.
So Kim, can't you just write that off?
Yes, it's.
Which is added?
That's an add-on. I believe I gave you a piece of paper. There was actually two schools that we found out about today. You'll discuss that over.
Yes, well, I also have to send a employee to smoke school for every, there are six months to do.
Send him here.
Smoke school.
That's for Aiden.
Aiden.
Gotcha.
So those two are added, so we're okay on that. We also have another addition to the agenda tonight. The airport authority has a deadline of Thursday to apply for some additional funding. It's basically one point one four million dollars in the federal share. They will cover the local match if necessary, so we're going to give them the authority to apply for that, and then we'll, we'll deal with it if it's approved. It's not costing the city any money at this time.
Good.
When is not ready yet on the entertainment district discussion, correct?
What's taking so long?
No, there, he's, Ian and Brian and I made yesterday, there are some changes that are going to be applied.
Okay.
We all work some in.
So it's dealing with state too, right? Have some state regulations that have to go through?
They do support.
Yeah.
That's the first half of our meeting, isn't it?
Good day.
You know, the, the entertainment district issue is constitutionally does not allow Solocaga to have entertainment districts. The exception that we're trying to carve is that if there is a, an entity such as the Commercial Development Authority, that it may be able to step in and be the sponsor of the entertainment district, and they're still working through all of that, because technically it's not, it's not a clear-cut thing according to the law.
Wow, many things come up, so.
All right, discussion of the pay plan.
That's a long one.
Ms. McGee? Is that, do you have something to guide us on, or just?
I really do have to pick the add. I'm already making a question, but she has questions.
Okay, so.
Thanks, Ms. Kim.
Okay, so, Ms. Morris and Ms. Sorenson. So we've computed on this big spreadsheet that we have, that if we were to accept the recommendation from Auburn, the total cost of implementation is three hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Yes.
So.
That is including your fringe benefits.
Oh my God. Wouldn't it have a work session that's linked to this?
Yeah, I think we're gonna need to discuss this separately, though.
Absolutely.
My, my impression of the Auburn.
Because it wasn't supposed to be that much.
Well, originally, the discussion was a hundred and eight thousand dollars, because I heard that three times. But the, the Auburn plan did not show Solocaga that far off, except in a couple of points. And this expense suggests that we might not be able to address everything. We just may need to be able to pick a few problems and fix them. Because again, it was not that far off, based on the comparative before and afters that they, that they showed.
We need to be careful with picking, because we did pay them ever so much money to come up with all this, but I don't understand this.
Yeah, we need to.
Just three hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's what insurance include, correct?
All, all the.
That's the final number.
All benefits. We're gonna need to have a special work session on this to review it more carefully.
It's not insurance.
It's not included, it's just benefits. Just the fringe benefits, it's not included insurance.
But this all the, this all the decisions that are budgeted too, right?
And this is what you and, what your office and HR has come up with, to get y'all working on all this together, to come up with all these numbers?
Well, HR had presented it, that's on the bottom there, the two seventy, I believe, Jane, the two seventy eight thirty-one is what they had shown.
And then there was, there was another.
We came back and added.
About six, sixty-five thousand in fringe.
Set up a work session so we can talk about that.
This is, this is too complicated to discuss with just a huge table.
We don't, it's the first time we've seen all this, we can't do that.
So we'll get back to that. All right, so other action necessary tonight, we have travel and training expenses for Sandy Sorenson, Jay McGee, and Cassie Epperson, to attend the local government health insurance board benefit admin conference in Utumka. We have accounts receivable, accounts payable invoices and August payroll to approve. The council will also meet tonight, following the council meeting, for a continued discussions of fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget requests. As part of a review, there's no actions taken at that, taken at those discussions. Anything else on the work session list? We can conclude our work session early at five thirty-two PM and move into our council meeting. Call any council meeting to order at five thirty-two. Roll call, Ashton Fowler.
Here.
Tiffany Nick.
Here.
Nate Brewer.
Here.
And Laura Heath's absence. The invocations night was provided by Police Captain Mark Ledbetter and my elected pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
We have some guests this evening, and welcome them. Mayor Heidel, could you give us your report?
Well, we sure have. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and students of the Solocaga School System. So proud to have you here. What a pleasure. It is my honor and pleasure for this proclamation to be read into the minutes of our city records. Whereas in eighteen ninety-seven, opening ceremonies were held at the Fourth District Agricultural School, which was west, which was established by the Act of Alabama Legislature on February eighteenth, eighteen ninety-five, and is known today as Solocaga High School. And whereas the original building located on the corner of Broadway and H Street, where the J. Greg Smith Community Center now stands, was built as a magnificent three-story building in the Queen Anne architectural style. With the classrooms, the third floor used as a girls' dormitory, the second floor as a president's suite, and classrooms for upper grades. And ground floor was for lower grades and a dining room. The young men were expected to board in town. And whereas in nineteen oh eight, lower grades were moved into the bank building across the street where Legion Field now stands. Whereas the school was operated by a local board that hired Mr. Charles S. Rather as the first superintendent in nineteen twenty-two. Whereas in nineteen twenty-four, construction was completed on the first unit of the school, then known as the State Secondary Agricultural School, on the same property in which downtown Solocaga, where Solocaga High School stands to this day. Whereas the population of the town grew over the years, adding more schools with Main Avenue Elementary, Zillabon Elementary, South Highland Elementary, East Highland High School, Montview Elementary, Pine Crest Elementary, Indian Valley Elementary, and Nicolosso Litter School, constructed to meet the educational needs of our Solocaga students. And whereas, for the past one hundred and twenty-five years, Solocaga City Schools have proudly stood as a light, in partnership with the community, to encourage, equip, and empower all students to own their own future, to provide diverse pathways to an excellent education. Therefore, being a result that I, Jim Iver, Mayor of City Solocaga, do hereby proclaim this one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Solocaga School System with thanks and appreciation to the heritage and educational experience through provided for the students of our city. I say I'm proud and honored to read this, for I came up through the Solocaga School System. My brother came up through the Solocaga School System. My niece's nephew came up, niece and nephew came up, along with my daughter and my three grandchildren. I'm very proud of our Solocaga School System. I think it's one of the best in the state of Alabama. Who will step forward and accept this proclamation? Oh, not true.
I think that's hard to ask.
Thank you so much for all you do for our city and our education.
Thank you.
Please address it publicly.
I would just like to say thank you. As you know, my brief old mission was, one, to honor the past. And it's so exciting to honor the hundred and twenty-five years of past experience that has taken place with our school system. And so thank you so much to the city council for your support. Thank you so much, Mayor. And as you know, we will be celebrating the first week of October. We will have celebrations just about every day. We'll have a retiring brunch. We will host the Chamber of Connections. We will have homecoming parade on Thursday instead of Friday, ending at Legion Stadium with a bonfire. We will also be tailgating for homecoming night. Hopefully, you've seen the QR code to sign up on Facebook to tailgate. And so we encourage every one of you to celebrate that week with us and be a part of honoring our past one hundred and twenty-five years. Could we maybe get a photo with all the students?
See council?
We do that one. Yes.
If you're grandkids?
Yes.
Students?
Students.
See, see council in the middle, please. And students, y'all fill in all the way.
Yeah, just fill in all the way.
We need to make sure, please, Brian, for Indian Valley students in the front, please.
Mr. Lewis, you come to our system, come on. Read the jury, read the judge. Will you stand in the corner?
Miss Forstner's here, Miss Yalz.
Come on, Dr. Lee, we all in this together.
Yeah, all of you.
I need somebody to stand in front of me. There you go.
More, Dr. Green, Tom Grove, and over here, come all the way around. Mr. Barron, come all the way around.
Let me know when we're serious.
We got you. Boy, I have a spot just for you.
And Miss Green, you need to be in here too. Come on, right up here, buddy. Right up here, buddy.
All right, are we ready?
We ready?
Everybody looking this way. If you can't see me, I can't see you, okay? All right, if we can see, ready?
Looks good.
This way, ready? Okay, now I'm gonna back out of the way. Did you get your?
Not yet.
All right, let me get out of your way.
All right, everybody look here, smile, bid for me on three. One, two, three. And one more, just to make sure everybody's eyes are open. One, two, three. That looks good.
We expect to be on the front page, man. We are Solocaga.
Do we have any parents that want to take pictures real quick? Do we have any parents who want to take?
Of course.
Okay, so don't, don't go anywhere. Let's, let's here, take a picture. All right, see back. No. I'm, I'm, I know all your mamas want a picture.
Thank y'all.
Dr. Lewis, thank you for bringing this to us, we would.
All right, y'all go to the lobby now.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Ashton Fowler, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. Need to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on September eighth, twenty twenty-two, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Ashton Fowler, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. Need to approve the minutes of the regular work session held on September eighth, twenty twenty-two, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Ashton Fowler, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved, there's no old business this evening, new business. Action that is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for H R specialist Jay McGee, administrative assistant Cassie Epperson, and accounting specialist Sandy Sorensen to attend the Local Government Health Insurance Board's Administrative Conference in Wautumpka, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. No registration fee, the employees will carpool. Expenses for mileage and lunch will be incurred, total estimated expenses for Sorensen, seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents. McGee, twenty-five dollars, and Epperson, twenty-five dollars, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Second by Ashton Fowler, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. Action that is necessary to authorize payments totaling four hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-eight cents for August payrolls, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. Action that is necessary to authorize payments for balance of account payable invoices for August in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-three cents, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Second by Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Yay.
Heard all yays and approves. Action that is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for Wade Fuller to attend the ADEM Smoke School in Montgomery, October fourth and fifth, twenty twenty-two. Registration fee, two hundred ninety dollars, additional expenses for mileage will be incurred. The estimated total expenses for Fuller, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. Action that is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for Stanley Peters to attend the Certified Youth and Asia Technician Training Course in Coleman, October first and second, twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two. Registration fee, three hundred dollars, additional expenses for mileage and lunches will be incurred, the estimated total expenses for Peters, four hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. Action that is necessary to approve a request from the Solocaga Airport Authority to submit a pre-application for fiscal year twenty twenty-three funding for parallel taxiway rehabilitation. Total project cost of one billion, one hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Federal share of one billion, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars. State share of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred forty dollars, with a local match of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred forty dollars to be paid by the Solocaga Airport Authority, may I have a motion to approve?
Not going to the conference meeting anything?
Not at this time.
Motion.
Motion by Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Second by Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved. It's time for anyone here who'd like to address the council to do so. If you'd like to speak, please state your name and address as to podium prior to addressing the council.
Mark Ledbetter, four oh one South Broadway, Solocaga. Chaplain for Solocaga Police Department and for the Talladega County Sheriff's Department. September seventeenth was National Banking Police Officer Day, so I'm here better late than never express appreciation to the law enforcement who are dedicated to protect and serve our communities here in Solocaga and in Talladega County. These individuals, every day when they put on their uniform, they don't know what they will encounter throughout the day. As councilperson Nix understands, there's no routine stop. As you know what I'm talking about. These individuals, most people may have one or two, maybe three critical incidents in a lifetime. Law enforcement will face that much possibly in a day. They can encounter hundreds of critical incidents, which creates a stress situation that's unparalleled by any other profession. They encounter every bit of stress that you would, as a family member, plus the responsibilities to protect and serve this community. These individuals do it in spite of the fact that sometimes things just don't go the way they think it should go, but they still perform their duties. These individuals have to deal with public misunderstanding, confusion. They have to deal with a lot of things that the common person who sleeps well at night does not know what's taking place after dark. But they're there to help this community. I know that some of you who know me know that I have a vested interest in law enforcement, having three sons in law enforcement. But it's not for their cause that I'm here, it's for the cause of every man and woman who puts on a badge, straps on a sidearm, and they, not out, they're not out to win favors, and I'm here to enforce the laws of the land and order assistance in the city. They have responsibility to respond to critical incidents. They can be sitting calmly in their car, just go in car, then all of a sudden, they're expected to take, take control of the situation that may be, be well out of hand. So these individuals are worthy of respect and our support because they, again, they're here to protect and serve. They're not here to write tickets or make a risk. They're here, hopefully, to change behavior and influence for good. Unfortunately, consequences are sometimes there are arrests and there are tickets that are written. But it's not their heart to do that, it's their heart to make a difference. And one other thing. I know for a fact that there are many kind, helpful, good incidents which law enforcement respond and help people in need, but it never makes the news or rarely makes the news. And it's for those things that I really appreciate, the law enforcement, our men and women, who dedicate themselves. For us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. In that routine traffic stop, I think I was at a level four with my weapon out at no time.
You learned a valuable lesson, didn't you?
I did, I really did, I learned that I do not want to be a police officer.
Tiffany went through some training with the police department. Yeah, so.
She did, and I would, I would encourage everyone here, when that place academy opens up again, take it. And open your eyes.
Imagine Tiffany with a bag, citizen to rest, citizen to rest.
Never mind.
Right. Anyone else have anything to add?
Would hurt you, thank you, sir.
Having no further business to discuss, may I have a motion to conclude our meeting this evening?
Motion.
Motion by Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Second by Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Yay.
Heard all yays and approved, time of adjournment is five fifty-seven P M, the council will be remaining, uh, in chambers to go through a budget work session, no decisions are made, we're just reviewing numbers as part of the finalizing the budget process. It is an open meeting, but it can be very boring, if you'd like to stay, feel free to do so.